Good evening. I call the Hampton School Board meeting to order. Ms. Bowers, please call the roll.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Harper? Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present. At this time, we will turn the meeting over to our student rep alternate Natalie Kidd.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Will everybody please stand as Jeremiah Peddaway, a 5th grader from Barron Fundamental Elementary School, who lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeremiah. So, will you introduce us to everybody that you brought with you today?
Yes. So, this is my mom and this is my dad and that's my science teacher. This is also my math teacher. That's my little brother sitting in my teacher's lap. That's my grandpa. That's my principal. That's my assistant principal. That was my...this is my 4th grade teacher. There's my kindergarten teacher. There's this, the special ed teacher, Ms. Carraccio and Ms. Gerzak. And there's this uncle, there's my uncle Don. Holding my ba...my baby cousin. And that's it.
So, when I visited you yesterday at Barron, we found something in common. Do you remember what that was? How we both have our moms teach at our own schools?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I found out that was funny. And then your brother Josiah also attends Barron, right?
Yep, in 1st grade in my, in Ms. Mars' class.
And when I happened to stop by yesterday, you said you're doing a science experiment. What was that science experiment on?
Played tectonics.
And how did this experiment go? Did you like it?
Yeah, it was edible, too.
So, but you said math was your favorite subject in school. And how long has it been your favorite subject?
Since kindergarten.
Since kindergarten? And what are the goals that you hope to achieve in the upcoming school year?
Get straight, get one, get like straight A's on one of my report cards.
It's a very good goal. And you're talking a lot about soccer. Can you say like all you do with soccer?
I played soccer since I was 3. I played rush, upward, VIP. That's it.
That's it? And do you watch soccer, too?
Yes.
Do you have a favorite team? And then do you have any plans for winter break?
To go to West Virginia to snowboard with my dad.
Oh, it's very fun. Alright, so what's the poem that you brought to share? Something about dreams?
Let no one steal your dreams.
Okay. Go ahead, yeah.
Let no one steal your dreams, let no one tear apart. The burning of ambition, the, that, that fires drive inside your heart. Let no one steal your dreams, let no one tell you that you can't. Let no one hold you back, let no one tell you that you won't. Set your sights and keep them fixed, set your sights on high. Let no one steal your dreams, your only limit is in the sky. Let no one steal your dreams, follow your heart, follow your soul. For only when you follow them will you feel truly whole. Set your sights and keep them fixed, set your sights on high. Let no one steal your dreams, your only limit is in the sky.
Thank you so much. That was so beautiful. Do you have anything else you wanted to share with us?
No.
No, that's it? Thank you very much, Jeremiah.
You're welcome.
Before we move forward, are there any other remarks or comments from board members from Mr. Pathaway? Padaway? Alright, thank you so much for correcting me. At this time, we will have musical selection by the Holiday Chorus from Langley Elementary School, under the direction of Mrs. Jennifer Murray. And they will perform two numbers. One.
(Music) Winter sky, blowing the snow around me, falling down, far as the eye can see. Evergreens bearing the weight of snowfall. Beauty breaks here on this winter walk. Lonely white covers the rolling landscape. Winter frost covers your skin and glass. I am here, luckers children play, and I need joy here on this winter walk. Sunlight sparkling on this lake of snow. Bright the day becomes so it was gray. Feel the wonder of the world around us. See the brilliance of the winter day. Winter sky, blowing the snow around me, falling down, far as the eye can see. Evergreens bearing the weight of snowfall. Beauty breaks here on this place to walk. (Music) In the way, the snow is twisting. A beautiful sight, we're happy tonight, walking in a winter wonderland. Gone away is the bluebird. In the day is a new bird. We sing in a song as we go along, walking in a winter wonderland. In the meadow we can build a snowman, and pretend that he's a circus clown. We'll have lots of fun with Mister Snowman, until the other kiddies knock him down. Windows and drilling, so your nose gets a chillin'. We probably can play, we have some away, walking in a winter wonderland. (Music)
Before the students exit, can you come back for one second, please? I would like to recognize the administrative staff at Langley. Could you please stand? And teachers from Langley. And will all the parents, grandparents, uncles, aunts, please stand? You all sounded so great. You got me ready for the holidays and ready to go out and do lots of shopping. So, on behalf of the Hampton School Board, I would like to say, thank you, thank you. And we, I believe we have the calendar for the Christmas holiday schedule. So, we will be visiting, board members will be visiting schools and we're hoping that Langley will be on our agenda to visit, to hear some more, December the 18th, to hear some more beautiful voices. So, thank you once again. Are there any remarks, Ms. Henry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's a good, you can look on the website and get the dates for all the concerts and, and you can, if you just want to be cheered up, you can go
Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
to one of the wonderful elementary ones, it's hard to get a seat at those. But if you go to one of the middle school or high school ones, the auditoriums are bigger and there's lots of room for you to go to hear a concert and definitely get in
Move approval of tonight's agenda as printed.
the Christmas spirit.
Thank you so much, Ms. Henry, for sharing that. Any other remarks from board members? Is there, is there a second? Well, have, enjoy the rest of the holiday season and Merry Christmas. Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Ms. Henry that we adopt the agenda as
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
printed.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Yes, ma'am.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly D., could we just recognize you?
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
You always, you and Vivian do such a great job in making sure that the arts and the
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
music in Hampton City Schools is always on a top-notch level.
Next on the agenda is our consent agenda, which include item 2.01, personal report
I mean, we are the eyes of the nation and we proved it in many, many ways.
number 17-23.
Thank you again.
Item 2.02, minutes of the school board meeting of November 1st, 2017. Item 2.03, minutes of the public hearing of October the 26th, 2017. And item 2.04, minutes of the public hearing of October the 8th, 2017. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. At this time of the agenda, which is item 2, I turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, for staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. At this time, I'd like to begin the superintendent and staff report with an introduction of Ms. Kelly Goral, our new Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing. Ms. Robin Ruth, our Executive Director of Human Resources, will make that introduction at this time. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Samuels, Vice Chair Cherry, board members. I am very excited to introduce our new Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing. There is a very detailed press release that was released on November 27th. It's available on the Hampton City Schools website. So, I just want to share some highlights with you this evening. Kelly Goral comes to us from Chesapeake Public Schools, where she has served as the Public Information Officer for a little over four years. Mrs. Goral has an extensive background in public education and has served as a middle school English teacher, as well as math and science, a middle school girls' basketball coach, a staff development administrator, and a middle school assistant principal, all in Chesapeake. Mrs. Goral received a bachelor's degree in liberal studies and elementary education from Longwood College and a master's of education and educational leadership from Old Dominion University. Her comprehensive experiences within public education make her the ideal person to lead the public relations and marketing efforts for Hampton City Schools. Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Goral to the Hampton City Schools family. Mrs. Goral has also, she has a fan club with her this evening. So, I'm going to ask her husband, Dave, who is a teacher in Chesapeake, is here. If you all would just please stand. Her daughter Zoe and her son DJ are also with us this evening.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, at this particular time, and members of the board, ask Ms. Goral if you'd like to make a few brief remarks to the board and certainly to the viewing audience at this time. Thank you.
I would just really like to express how thankful I am for this opportunity. Hampton City Schools is a wonderful school division. I am a graduate of Chesapeake Public Schools, so I was very fortunate to grow up in this region and visit Hampton and have friends and family in Hampton. So, I'm very excited to be here, to be part of the team. So, thank you very much and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you so much and welcome to Hampton.
When do you start?
January the 1st, right, will be the official day?
We're going to give her the first off. January 2nd is her official starting date.
Look forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for that opportunity. At this time, we'll move toward the Academies of Hampton update. And as many of you will recall, when I arrived on July the 15th, 2015, almost two and a half years ago, the idea of moving toward college and career wall-to-wall academies was indeed a concept that had been explored. This evening, you will hear and witness the extensive planning that will move us from pocket academies, one at each high school, to now a total of 16 academies for the 2018-2019 school year, with 44 pathways for our high school young people. Indeed, this work sets the stage for transforming teaching and learning, the secondary experience, certainly that experience of the community, business, and civic engagement as well. These continue to be exciting times for Hampton City Schools and we're building from places of strength. As a school board, you have embraced and promoted this journey because we all know that it's in, that this is in the best interest of young people, as well as the community at large. Our commitment is to ensure that our young people leave Hampton City Schools college, career, and life-ready. At this particular time, I would ask that Dr. Woods, as well as Ms. Hurd, if they would come forward and share with the board and the viewing audience information regarding updates on the academies of Hampton. Thank you so very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Dr. Woods.
Good evening, Chairman Samuels, Vice Chair Cherry, school board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. This evening, we will provide an update on the work that we've been engaged in relative to the five-year master plan. We unveiled a five-year master plan last April and we've been working diligently to fulfill the plan. This year, we successfully implemented freshman academies in each of our high schools. They're small learning communities and they're going very well. We've also collaborated with our community, business, and post-secondary partners to identify, as Dr. Smith indicated, 16 career academies and 44 pathways for our students that will start next year. It is the vision of the school board to link academic studies with college and career readiness to ensure that, in fact, our students graduate college, career, and life-ready. Our academies will offer a unique instructional model that combines experiential learning opportunities with innovative curriculum design to elevate, and I thought it was so appropriate this evening to hear Jeremiah talk about dreams, to elevate their goals, their dreams, and their aspirations. We're fortunate in Hampton to have a community of educators, parents, business, and industry partners, ready to collaborate, to make our students' dreams and aspirations come true. So, we've made significant progress on the implementation of the master plan, but adjustments will have to be made along the way. And we're committed to doing that relative to continual improvement. So, thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on our journey. And at this time, I'd like to present Ms. Veronica Hurd.
Good evening, Chair Samuels, Vice Chair, school board, and Dr. Smith. I am delighted to share all this wonderful work that we have before us, especially to highlight all the work that our community have really been bringing together for the betterment of our young people. It's always exciting to see young people before us, and especially when we saw the choir today, because really, it's up to us to ensure that we don't let anyone steal their dreams. And so, that's what we're doing in the city of Hampton, ensuring that our young people are exposed to their dreams and that we help them to achieve their dreams. And so, today, I am delighted to share with you the Academies of Hampton update. So, of course, we'll go over the academy next steps. We have the transformation update for you all. We'll also hear more about the academies and pathways for this school year coming up. In addition to that, how our young people will actually select and be selected into their academies. And of course, we want to share with you all and the families that are listening, some of the career exploratory opportunities for our young people to learn more about the college and career academies that we will have available for our young people. So, we are very excited and eager to click. So, of course, everything that we do in Hampton City Schools aligns with our strategic goals, which are to maximize every child's learning and to maintain effective, efficient, and innovative support systems. And that's exactly what we're doing with the Academies of Hampton. Innovative ways to ensure that our young people are successful within the classroom and beyond the classroom when they enter into their career journeys. By now, I'm quite sure that everyone says Hurd's presentation could definitely contribute to this, but of course, it brings it in perspective about what we are doing and why we need to do what we're doing now. So, ultimately, why are we changing? We are changing because we are currently preparing students for jobs that don't yet exist, using technologies that haven't been invented, in order to solve problems that we don't even know are problems yet. The magnitude of that could be overwhelming for some, but not for us in Hampton City Schools and the community of Hampton, because we have a plan. What we're presenting to you all is the MASTA Plan, and this is really how we're going to help our young people to be able to solve those problems that we don't even know are problems yet. So, before we go any further, I have a video for you all.
Hampton City Schools is transforming all four high schools to prepare students for success in careers, lifelong learning, and in life. But why? Stop, look around. The world is changing and it is changing quickly. Do you remember having one of these? Look at it now. What about this? Look at it now. What about this? In the words of our young people, what is that? So, how will we transform what it means to teach and learn in Hampton City Schools? Let's learn more about this transformation from one of our students.
Hi, I'm Xavier and I will walk you through all of this. Hampton City Schools has partnered with Forward Next Generation Learning, bringing together educators, employers, community leaders, and students like us, to connect high school to real-world learning experiences. Together, we are transforming what it means to teach and learn in high school by connecting the classroom to authentic learning experiences outside of the classroom. Basically, helping students like us to answer the infamous "why" question. Why do I need to know this? When will I ever use this? The Hampton community wants to make sure that we are prepared for life after high school by connecting the "why" to our learning experiences, but by also helping us to develop real skills that will help us to get hired, whether that is directly after high school or after college. The business leaders of today are making learning more meaningful for us to help ensure we are ready to take over their future businesses in the near future. We call this transformation, the Academies of Hampton. By partnering with key local, regional, and national organizations to mobilize educators, employers, and community leaders, we have crafted a new approach to high school education. Through the Academies of Hampton, we will select a college and career lens to learn through. Health sciences, cybersecurity, manufacturing, information technology, and more. We still take core courses such as English, science, social studies, and they are taught through the lenses of our selected academy. Strengthening the connection between learning in the classroom with what we may pursue after graduation makes learning more meaningful, giving us the transferable skills needed to be college and career-ready. So, how does a student choose an academy? Incoming 9th graders enroll in freshman academy, where they learn skills necessary to be successful in high school and explore career interests. After this exploration, students choose an academy and a pathway for their 10th, 11th, and 12th grade years. Law enforcement within the academy of law and public safety is an option. This is similar to choosing a college major. These smaller learning communities provide students with a sense of belonging and help to develop strong teacher-student relationships. No matter what academy or pathway a student chooses, the courses will relate to real problems being faced by real companies. Workplace learning opportunities, such as job shadowing and internships, give students hands-on experiences and understanding of career options and increased technical and soft skills. Also, by leveraging students' personal interests, school becomes relevant, increasing academic achievement, attendance, and graduation rates. The movement to transform all of our high schools to wall-to-wall college and career academies began with research on high demand, high wage, and real-world job opportunities in the coastal Virginia region. Additionally, parent, student, teacher, and community input determine the academies and associated pathways offered at our schools. The goal: to ensure all graduates of Hampton City Schools will have the opportunity to enroll in a college or other post-secondary training option, enlist in military service, or become employed in a sustainable career with opportunities for growth. To find out more or to get involved, visit our website and click on "schools" and then "academies." (Applause) This is similar to choosing a college major. These smaller learning communities provide students with a sense of belonging and help to develop strong teacher-student relationships. No matter what academy or pathway a student chooses, the courses will relate to real problems being faced by real companies. Workplace learning opportunities, such as job shadowing and internships, give students hands-on experiences and understanding of career options and increased technical and soft skills. Also, by leveraging a student's personal interest, school becomes relevant, increasing academic achievement, attendance, and graduation rates. The movement to transform all of our high schools to wall-to-wall college and career academies began with research on high demand, high wage, and real-world job opportunities in the coastal Virginia region. Additionally, parent, student, teacher, and community input determine the academies and associated pathways offered at our schools. The goal: to ensure all graduates of Hampton City Schools will have the opportunity to enroll in a college or other post-secondary training option, enlist in military service, or become employed in a sustainable career with opportunities for growth. To find out more or to get involved, visit our website and click on "Schools," and then "Academies."
So excited to show it to you all one more time, as you can see there. But as you can see, this is not a CTE program by any means. What we are doing in Hampton City Schools is for all our young people. It does not matter if they are going directly into work after high school or they're going off to college. Ultimately, the goal of the Academies of Hampton is to allow our young people to find their possible career interests, to align those possible career interests with subjects in school, help them to learn through a place of interest, and then to apply internships and workplace learning experiences to ensure that our young people can get ahead. So again, it's not a CTE program by no means. It's not a program at all. This is a transformation. We are transforming how we teach and learn in Hampton City Schools for the betterment of our students and our community. And other people, you may have heard, are starting to wonder more about what we're doing in Hampton City Schools. And recently, we had a visit from Manassas Park City Schools. They came to see what this transformation is all about, because like others across the globe, people want to know how to better ensure that the young people are ready for what comes next for them. We live in a global society. We're competing with each other, and how we're currently preparing our young people for the future, we know it needs to change. So others are coming to us, the city of Hampton, Hampton City Schools, to see what we're doing, so then they can take it back and help imply it in their buildings. So we're excited to be a model within our community that I've come in towards to help implement. So of course, Manassas came. They came with school administrators, in addition to city council members, and some teachers, to really see what it means to teach and learn in Hampton City Schools, but also what it really looks like in the academy lens. In addition to that, they had an onboarding session where we were able, and Ms. Henry is actually there to be part of the conversation, to really have a conversation with them all about what we're doing, our plan, and then how we're going to implement it. And of course, they had a school board member also in attendance, so Ms. Henry was able to have that conversation through that personal perspective. So the fact that we have people in Virginia coming to see what we're doing in Hampton, and we can help guide them, not only speaks to the great work that we're doing here, but the value of the work that we're doing here. This is not only for our young people. This model can be implemented across the globe, which it is, but we are the first in Virginia to commit to doing this for our young people. So we're excited about that. In addition to this, I hope you've all heard, but at Bethel High School, we have officially opened the Law and Public Safety Academy. We have recently had the ribbon cutting during the legislature, Take Your Legislature to School Day, and I'm sure you saw the newspaper. Delegate Hassel is beyond ecstatic with what we're doing, and so is the governor. We have plenty that are ecstatic. But most importantly, we had a young person. His name is Mackay, and he is actually part of the Law and Public Safety Academy, and he is in the emergency communication corps. This young man is so excited about the opportunity that you all have allowed him to be bestowed upon him. He is excited that he gets to graduate, and he can go in and have a job, make some money, but that's not his ultimate goal. He does want to come out of high school and work as an emergency dispatcher, but his ultimate goal is to continue into high school, college, to ultimately secure his criminal justice degree. So he already knows that, and he's telling, spreading the word, letting people know that I can make approximately $35,000. So other students are jumping on board, like, "Oh, I want to do something like that, too." But like Mackay, he knows that once he leaves high school, yes, he needs to work, but in addition to that, this is one step and tool towards his ultimate goal, and that's what the Academies of Hampton is all about. Helping our young people to have various options along their journey, their journey to securing their ultimate goals. And so that's what we're doing with the Academies of Hampton. We are preparing our young people to exceed all their possible goals and opportunities that are available to them, and helping them along their way so they can get ahead, not only for themselves, but most importantly, for themselves and our community. So we're excited about that. Our mission, and we cannot say it enough, our mission is to ensure that our young people are prepared to succeed in careers, lifelong learning, and life. This is beyond what just happens in the classroom. For our young people to be successful, they need more than what's just happening in our classrooms. We really need to look at the entire young person to ensure that they are successful in future careers, in lifelong learning, and life. And so, our school board, of course, and our community have come together, and they said, "You are right." And we are excited that you are creating a platform for us to get involved now to help ensure that our future employees are ready, they're prepared for success in careers, lifelong learning, and life. So we are beyond ecstatic about all the great work that's ahead. Portrait of a Graduate is at the forefront. This is not just Hampton City Schools. This is what Hampton City Schools and our community working together has said. For our young people to be successful, there are certain things they need to know, do, and be able to understand to be successful. So as a community, we come together, and our young people should have adequate contact knowledge, career and life skills. They should be able to communicate, collaborate, and lead, and they should have a positive sense of self and purpose. And like the young man said earlier, so young others cannot steal their dreams. So others cannot steal their dreams. That's not for us to do. We're there to expose our young people to their passions and then help them along the way. And we have an entire community that is here with us to say, "We are willing to help you," and we are excited that they are here, because we know our young people deserve it. So the Portrait of a Graduate is our commitment to our young people, our community's commitment to the young people, their family's commitment to the young people, and then also, our young people's commitment to themselves, because they need to see the value in themselves and unlock that value so they have a positive sense of self and purpose. And so who could not be excited to be about that work? So we are by far excited. So academy next steps. As you can see, we have been on this journey for some time. We've gone from Pocket Academy, and then we saw that Pocket Academy, our young people are doing well. The data supported that. So we started exploring this journey about, okay, what if we extended this opportunity? And Ms. Mugler, you were definitely one of those advocating for that, extending this opportunity to other students to learn in this academy model. So young people have the opportunity to learn through a career, college and career lens of interest. So now we're embarking on a journey where our young people, all our young people, can learn through a college and career lens of interest. So of course, we explored it. We planned it. What should this look like? We started developing the plan, the MASA Plan, but guess where we are now? We are implementing it. We are putting it into action, and that is exciting, because you all know, many people develop plans, but they stay plans, and that's not what we're doing in the city of Hampton or Hampton City Schools. We're putting our plan into action, because guess what? Our young people deserve it, and we are making this commitment to them that they will, each and every one of them, will graduate the Portrait of a Hampton graduate. And we know what we are currently doing is not going to allow each and every one of our young people to graduate as the Portrait of a Hampton graduate. So we're changing how we do things to ensure that each and every one of our young people graduate the Portrait of a Hampton graduate, and we are excited about that. So one of the major parts is going to be, how are we going to ensure this is an equitable option for our young people? And we know one of the large things is going to be transportation. And so we have been working closely with our community to see which current transportation options are available for our young people to be able to, A, not only select one of the sixteen academies, but also one of the possible forty-four pathways that's available to them. That's ample option. Our young people will have options in their building, and they will also have options outside of their buildings. So before we said we wanted our young people to unlock their passion and find it, and so when they align that passion with a possible college and career academy and pathway, we want to ensure that they have the opportunity to get there, an equitable way to get there. And so today, I'm gladly going to turn it over to Darren Wills, so he can share more about the possible transportation options that we have available for our young people. Mr. Wills, did you want to come closer? And we also have HRT that are going to be part of this conversation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Smith. It is indeed a pleasure to be before you to actually have the opportunity to speak and be a part of this wonderful opportunity for our students here in the city of Hampton. I certainly would like to thank Dr. Woods, Ms. Hurd, Dr. Smith, and other members of the Board that worked with us on operating committee, who were making sure that we did not do anything that would impact our daily operations, but we were able to move forward to make sure that we could get our kids to their respective academies. So again, I want to thank the entire operating committee for allowing us to do that. It was a wonderful, wonderful experience for us. So without further ado, we're going to go ahead and move forward. I am excited to show my team everywhere we go, because I believe in a collective unit and having that collaboration with my staff to make sure that they know and understand the importance of everything that we do for this particular school division, as well as how we're preparing for the future with the Academies of Hampton. So again, I am elated for my wonderful staff, and they've been working hard, and we have been making sure that we have dialogue to make sure that everybody understands that this will be a successful move for Hampton City Schools. So I wanted to kind of give you a brief overview, kind of what we do on a daily basis. So we have three tiers that we run on a daily basis. First tier, as you can see, we have one hundred and fifty-five routes that we perform. Second-tier routes, we have one hundred and fifty-four, which are our high school routes. And third tier, our middle school routes, we perform exactly one hundred and thirty-one. On a total average of how many runs we do per day, we perform successfully, and I'm very proud of that, with traveling over thirteen, between thirteen to fifteen thousand miles per day, a thousand and fifty runs. Please know and understand, this does not include after-school programs or athletic runs, but on a daily basis, we perform approximately a thousand and fifty runs. Total transported per day, students, thirteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-two. I used some of last year's data to show you, because I felt it was very impressive for the field trips and the athletics. We performed last year, one thousand, one hundred and forty-seven field trips, and that was kind of all over the place for athletics field trips to make sure that our kids were getting to and from to get that experience and hands-on experience that they need and they deserve. We performed exactly one thousand, one hundred and forty-six athletic runs, meaning that during the crucial times of two and three, we're moving approximately anywhere from five to possibly twenty-one teams between that timeframe of our daily operations being into motion and delivering our students home in the afternoon. We currently have one hundred and fifty-seven full-time drivers. As you can see, we can hold up to one hundred and sixty-one, and I'm very pleased to know and see that this has been the best for Hampton City Schools in many years that I've been here, to see that we're finally getting closer. We're not really having a driver shortage, if you will, but we're working hard and will continue to do just that. We have approximately nineteen substitute drivers. We can carry up to twenty-nine. We're in the process of filling those other ten positions. Our drivers perform a daily fulfillment of six hours per day. Anything they do above that, of course, that is extra. When we sat down and we were devising the plan to present to the operating committee, we put all of our zone schools up, and we looked and we said, "What would be the most effective and efficient way that we can make these academies work?" So we looked at all four of the high schools, and we looked at the neighborhood zones, and we said, "What could we do to make sure that we could, it wouldn't, you know, hinder or impact us in any kind of way?" And the best scenario that we came up with for the four zones was to transport our students, the first option for Hampton City Schools would be to transport our students who ride their zone buses to their zone schools, and then we will shuttle them to their respective academy. So meaning, these students will be picked up. We already have established stops, and we will be able to pick them up at their zone stops, take them to their zone schools, and then we already have buses that will be sitting there waiting to shuttle them to their respective academies. Students will depart the academy school at 2:30 and be shuttled back to their respective zone school to be transported home. Those students who are out of zone and/or those students who are in the non-transport zone, nothing is changing with our board policy. They will still have to have transportation provided for them, as well as not being eligible for transportation, those students in the non-transport zone. The last block, we were talking about that, and we were worried about it. We pick them up at 2:30. We know we did not want them to miss that instructional time of anywhere between thirty to thirty-five, possibly forty minutes. So Dr. Woods and her creativity came up with, the last block will be a blended virtual and face-to-face course that she would be working out, that the kids would be able to finish their learning and get their instructional by way of computer, if you will. But I am indeed pleased to know that when we looked at the options, we wanted to say that, hey, if we could get them to and from their respective academies, when that time come and the partnerships that we've built with other businesses, and they have internships that the students would be able to, you know, participate in, how would we get them there? And we, you know, we were looking to say, you know, hey, it's hard for us to possibly go outside the city. So we wanted to make sure that we partnered with HRT, and I want to thank Mr. Brian Chenault and the Austin team at HRT, because they were elated to be a part of this, to say, "Hey, we can provide something for you." We're in partnership. We want to see the kids be successful in Hampton. So we wanted to make sure that we looked at every avenue for internships, as well as getting them to and from their respective academy on a daily basis, and we feel confident in the service that we feel we could provide to our students. So without further ado, this particular option that you will be hearing next from HRT will be presented by Mr. Brian Chenault, and then I feel very confident that those students who have internships and/or the parents may feel that this hybrid option that we're providing, they will be able to choose a good viable means of transportation for their kids to and from school. So at this time, I would turn the microphone over to Mr. Brian Chenault and his team for the second part of this presentation.
Thank you so much for allowing us to be here this evening. My name is Brian Chenault. I am a service planner with Hampton Transit. Over the past year, we've had the opportunity to work with Ms. Hurd and Mr. Wills and get to learn more about the academies program. I know that they've both sort of made us really pumped up about it. We're excited about it. And as Ms. Hurd said, really what we want to be, obviously, is a strong partner for the academies program, and we want to be an option. We want to be a viable option for students and their families. I think although, while we know we're not going to be able to fulfill the transportation needs of every student and their family, what's exciting to us is that Hampton students are already using HRT. They've been using HRT long before the academies program, excuse me, and long before the Student Freedom Pass, which we're going to speak with you about this evening. So we're a group who obviously loves transit. We get to see on an everyday basis the impact that transit has, not only on individual lives, but also that it has just on our region as a whole. So we're excited about transit. I use transit every single day. I ride my bus from downtown Hampton over to our office in Norfolk. So we're just, we're really excited about this, and, you know, what we're going to do this evening is, and I apologize, Tiffany was, had a little bit of an illness tonight, so Debbie, who works in our customer service department, she's going to speak with you about the Student Freedom Pass. And so what we're going to do is, I'm going to speak with you just about the current level of service that HRT operates in the city of Hampton to each of the four high schools. Hampton has a very robust set of, a very robust bus network. In each of the four high schools, being that they're located along major thoroughfares in the city, each are served by a combination of one or four routes that we have in our system. So what I want to do is just walk you through each high school. So show you each high school and tell you a little bit about the route that services each of those high schools, get into a little bit of information about the schedule, get into some information about the bus stops. And I'm just going to draw your attention very quickly. You should see a blue folder that was in your packet. There's going to be a lot of detail on each of the routes going to each of the high schools, probably a lot more detail than I'm going to be able to cover tonight, but it's a very good resource if you have any, if you're looking for some more in-depth information on that. So I'm just going to start with Bethel High School, and like I said, we're going to go through each of the four high schools. Bethel High School, obviously located along Big Bethel Road. Bethel High School is serviced by our Route 110, and so if you open your packet, what you'll see is hopefully the first picture that you have here kind of looks like this. And you'll be able to see on the right a map of our Route 110. It's a fairly large route. It operates, it starts rather, in the downtown Hampton. We have a transfer center, if you're familiar, at the intersection of King and Pembroke. It's a termini point and a beginning point for a lot of our routes that operate in the city of Hampton. This route starts from there as well. It primarily travels along Queen Street and Browfield Road. You'll see that it goes to the Net Center or the old New Market Mall. It also makes its way up Orchid Avenue and from Big Bethel, Todd's Lane into Big Bethel Road. And as you'll see, it travels past Bethel High School, and it also finishes at Thomas Nelson Community College. I always refer to this route as sort of our school-oriented route. And not only goes by Bethel, it goes by Hampton High School as well, and of course, Thomas Nelson. So you'll tend to see a lot of students along this route anyway. The route services a lot of different areas, as you'll see. It's a fairly large route. You'll see the downtown area, obviously, is served, the greater with Aberdeen, Northampton areas, and areas, and Grutter areas as well, these are just areas that the route goes through and is accessible to students. The service is hourly, so any given point along that route, you'll basically see a bus pass by you once an hour. The service, Monday through Friday, operates from six AM to approximately eleven o'clock at night. We do have Saturday and Sunday hours, but obviously Monday through Friday is what's going to be most important for the students. And then if you look as well, if I can draw your attention to the aerial map that's on the left side of the page, you'll see Bethel High School, obviously, and you'll see the bus stops that are most convenient to Bethel, that are serviced by the Route 110. The one in front of Bethel High School is probably the most obvious of, of any of the high schools, it's pretty much right in front of the main, the sign for Bethel High School, so you'll see that there. The stop on the opposite side of the street is a little bit closer to Burton Street. And so, and you can see how we've had them labeled here, so this route, again, operates from downtown Hampton and Thomas Nelson. So the idea is that if a student is coming from basically south of Big Bethel High School, or, excuse me, Bethel High School, perhaps from the downtown area, what would they would ultimately do is in the morning time, they would get off at that stop that you see that's closer to Burton Street. And then in the afternoon, to go back in the same direction, if they choose to use the Route 110, they would essentially get on the stop that's in front of the high school. So, and the, and the same thing applies, if the student is coming north of the high school, somewhere from up near Thomas, you know, Thomas Nelson, north of Hampton and Center Parkway, they would be getting off in the morning at the stop that's right in front of the sign, and then vice versa, they would be getting back on in the afternoon at the stop across the street. And what you'll see also in your packet as well, is the public timetable or the schedule for the Route 110. And I'm going to sort of talk about this a little bit in-depth for the 110, but not really for the other routes because it's a little, little bit of detail. What you'll see is, what we've done is just basically blown up the schedule, and we've highlighted those trips along the Route 110 that a student would need to be on if they wanted to be able to get to Bethel High School. And so what you'll see, and I'm not, you know, how familiar you are with the transit schedule, but what we have are, you'll see little, little circles along the route, and these are what we refer to as time points, and they simply allow a customer to know when, where they can expect to see that bus at any given point in time. So you'll see, for instance, that Bethel High School is located between time points five and time point six. So that bus is, is between Big Bethel Road and Todd's Lane and Thomas Nelson Community College. So what we've done here, which you can see with the red arrow, for instance, if a student is coming south of the high school, they can expect to arrive at Bethel High School somewhere between six forty in the morning and six fifty if they take, if they take that first trip, and then seven forty and seven fifty if they take that, the second trip. And the same thing applies, you can see we highlighted it on the opposite side as well, if a student is coming somewhere north of the high school. And then finally, as you can see as well, the, we've put some detailed information about the route on the next page after that. So you can see, we highlighted some of the neighborhoods that it services, you can also see some of the major transfer areas, you can see some of the different educational institutions, points of interest, shopping centers, and different things like that. So that's Bethel High School. So I'm going to move on to Hampton High School. Hampton High School is also serviced by the Route 110, so I'm not going to go into any detail about the 110. It is also serviced, it is the only, only one of the four high schools that's serviced by two routes. And it's also serviced by the Route 102. The Route 102 is a relatively short route, unlike the 110, but it also does begin at the downtown transfer center and it eventually ends at the Centerra Hospital on Coliseum Drive and Hampton and Center Parkway. It primarily travels again on Queen Street and Briarfield Road, much like the 110, but then it also goes up Power Plant Parkway, it services the Peninsula Town Center area, and then again finishes at the Centerra Careplex. Like the 110, it's also an hourly route, it services the downtown area, the Greater With, Aberdeen, Northampton, and Mercury Central areas. It operates Monday through Friday from approximately six o'clock in the morning till approximately eight o'clock at night as well. And you can see, there are quite a few bus stops actually along Queen Street that are accessible to students, these are sort of the two that are the closest, we just have, happen to have quite a, a number of bus stops in this area. And those stops are located at, on Queen Street at Inland View, and again, we've just sort of labeled them the same way that we did with the map for Bethel High School, just to give you an idea of sort of what stop you're going to need to use depending on what area that you're coming from. So that's, that's Hampton High School. The next is Phoebus High School. Phoebus High School is serviced by our Route 109, like the 102, it's a relatively short route, it also again begins at the downtown Hampton Transfer Center. It is primarily our Buckrow Route, so it primarily operates up and down Pembroke Avenue. Again, downtown area of Phoebus and Buckrow, or the, excuse me, main areas that it services, it's Monday through Friday service, again, from approximately seven o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock in the evening. And the bus stops for Phoebus High School are located on Pembroke Avenue at Oak Crest. We, we know in this area, and what we see quite a bit, quite often now, is that a lot of students will use these stops and there's a, there's a pedestrian crosswalk or a sort of a pathway that a lot of them will use to get to the high school. So there's a crosswalk for them to use, and Debbie will tell you, as many times as we've ridden this route, it's very popular for Phoebus High School. I would say out of all the, out of all the high schools and all the routes, this is probably the one that's, that I would say is used the most. You, you will tend to see a lot of the students get off here and kind of make their way through the path that you have there. The final high school is Kickatan High School, and this route is serviced by the Route 115. Again, like the others, it starts in the downtown Hampton area, it operates primarily along King Street, Little Back River Road, Clemwood Parkway, and Fox Hill Road. Services the downtown area, North King Street, Fox Hill, and Buckrow. It's hourly service provided Monday through Friday from approximately six o'clock in the morning till roughly midnight, so it has a nice long span of service. And the bus stops here are located on Fox Hill Road and Woodland Drive. Kickatan's a little bit unique in the sense that it's not sort of on the main arterial there like the other three high schools, but we still have bus stops that are very closely located on Woodland, excuse me, on Fox Hill Road that students can use. It's a very short distance, you see, we have it on the map there, it's approximately point three miles to the high school, which is about a six-minute walk, I believe this intersection has a, a nice crosswalk and things like that as well. So it's certainly a good option for students who want to use the Route 115 to get to Kickatan High School. And then finally, one of the things that we've made sure to mention in our past presentations, and it's a really important tool, if you go to our website, gohrt.com, on the main page, what you'll see is a, a module, if you will, to basically plan your trip. And this is really important because these routes that service the high schools are the ones that a student is ultimately going to have to finish their journey on. So if you have a student, obviously, who goes to Bethel High School, but they live somewhere up near Langley Air Force Base, what have you, and their mode of transportation is only transit, they're going to finish their journey on the 110, but it's very likely that they're going to begin their journey on a different route. So that's why we want to make sure that we utilize the plan your trip. And the really nice feature about this is that you can obviously put in your starting and ending destination, it's powered by Google, but you can specify when you need to either leave your starting point or where you, where you need to, what time you need to get to your end point, which that's critical, obviously, if a student is needing to get to one of their academies by eight o'clock in the morning. And so it will basically tell you what time you need to leave to your, leave your house, how far the walk is to your bus stop, how, the transfer you need to make at this area, how long your wait is, so it's, it's very comprehensive if a student is going to be using transit from, for their entire journey. So it's a great tool that we have, and again, it's powered by Google, you can, you can go to, to there as well and get the same information, but that one is always up on our homepage, so it's a, it's a great tool to use. So now I'm going to turn it over to Debbie, who's going to talk about the Student Freedom Pass. And the Student Freedom Pass is sort of the vehicle by which Hampton students, again, if it's the right choice for them and their family, can access transit and can use it and hopefully alleviate any sort of financial burdens that may come with using public transit. So I'm going to let Debbie talk to you about that.
Okay, okay.
I'm not the techie one here, I'm the old lady. Good evening, thank you for allowing us to come. The Student Freedom Pass is a really remarkable thing that's come about. It is available to students throughout the Hampton Roads area, not just in the city of Hampton, but it's for students ages thirteen to seventeen. All they need to do is go online, they register, using their smartphones, which all of them have, or their computer at home, and then they just need to bring in a form of proof of age, birth certificate, a DMV ID, driver's license. We don't advertise this part, but Debbie already knew about it, so if you've got a student that just doesn't quite have it, any of those types of forms of ID, we'll accept transcripts from the guidance department, it has their birth date on it. And then they just show us their school ID, which confirms that that's who they are. We make a hard copy, a hard picture ID, it's plastic, and they change colors to make it easier for our drivers. So just recently, this past Monday, the fourth, we started making the 2018 Student Freedom passes, and they're going to be blue. So the current passes are red and they'll be good until January the thirteenth. As of January the thirteenth, we'll no longer accept the red ones. These passes are good for the students to ride the buses with unlimited usage for free. They can ride the regular routes, they can ride our MAX routes, which are the buses that take us from Northside to Southside, which is what Brian and I both use to utilize the Southside facilities when we have to work over there. They can also ride the ferry, they can ride the light rail. It enables them to go to some of these jobs that they want to go to for their internships, it goes to the colleges that they want to go to if they're going to take early admission classes. They don't have to pay. If you've got students that are out of zone and they've got to provide their way to get to the academy, this is a great way for them to be able to get there and they don't have to have someone get up and bring them in or rearrange their work schedule to get them to school or to the academy or to work or to the internship and enable them to do it. Now we did establish the age of thirteen because we feel that at that stage, you're pretty responsible enough to ride on your own. We set it at seventeen as the limit, however, if a school does have a student that's enrolled that they're eighteen, my son was one of them, in October of his senior year, he'd already turned eighteen, we will allow that student to still receive a pass. The passes are good January the first through December the thirty-first, okay? We've got Kickatan High School coming next week, this is such a huge success, they're bringing us over four hundred students to the downtown Hampton location. Yes, I will be working my fingers to the bone, taking pictures of, of Kickatan students, but it's well worth it because that's four hundred students that are going to get out there and get to do something and not, and not be hindered by, hey mom, can you take me somewhere? Hey grandma, can you take me somewhere? Dad, can you run me here? They've got the freedom to go on the buses. And as Brian has told you, the Google Trip Planner is wonderful, they've got their smartphones, and our drivers are great on the buses. If the kids run into a problem, they can go to the driver and ask for help, they'll help them along the way. If they don't have a smartphone, they still need to have help in planning their trip, don't hesitate, call my staff, that's what we're there for. We're there from five in the morning till seven at night, and we're there to help you with your trip planning also. But this is the best thing that we've done in a long time to help the students get where they need to go and it not cost anything. For the kids that are under the thirteen age range, with a paying adult, they still ride free. Anybody got a question?
You were the substitute presenter? Because you're quite good.
Thank you, thank you. But I also have to tell you, this is like deja vu for me. I was the Penn Tran liaison with Hampton City Schools when we did it for y'all. And so I recognize a couple of folks out here from a long time ago, so it's nice to be back.
It's nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Did you say that there was a fee?
No, sir.
Okay.
Well, I, I take that back, there is, there, there's always a catch.
Yes.
The first ID that we make for you is free. However, to teach responsibility to our youth, if you lose it, it's stolen or broken, we will charge you fifteen dollars to make it. And it will be the only replacement you will receive for the entire year.
Okay, we need to know that.
And we do tell the students when we make it, that it comes out of their pocket. Now whether mom and dad make it come out of their pockets, it's up to them, but we try to make them, I'm a grandmother now, so I do try to push that responsibility bit a little bit stronger, but yes, that is the only fee that's charged at any time, is if they happen to lose it, stolen, or broken. And we did go to the, this year, we are also adding their birth dates on it, and it's helping, so it's another form of ID that they can use when they get their jobs at the academies, they can cash their checks.
Thank you.
Well, you know, we're, we're used to Mr. Wills and his department being excited to help us out and to do, go the extra mile, but it's been, it's been such a treat to have participation of HRT on the planning committee and the steering committee and all that, to get this kind of enthusiastic response, and it's just, it's wonderful for young people. If you, if you're going to live here, even if you're going to go away to go to school in another city, you have to learn to survive in the real world, and the real world means sometime you have to get on a bus, but the nice thing for young people is that they have, they can do it with their smartphones, that's going to make it so much more friendly than trying to go through the paper, you know, I'm that old that I remember that.
We do still have the printed schedules.
Folded up ones and trying to find out how to get around Greensboro, North Carolina was my challenge when I was in school. But it's, it's, it's wonderful that they have this and the bus drivers are willing to work with them, they're, they're used to young people riding on their buses, they, they look out for them, you have security measures, you, we're, HRT is trying to do everything to make this convenient and safe and comfortable for our young people, and we're really excited about the partnership.
We look forward to working with more students. Thank you.
Again, I would like to thank HRT, Brian, and Debbie for working with us. Ms. Henry, thank you for giving my summary, I appreciate it, but we have enjoyed working with them in partnership and building that relationship and that collaborative effort. I just wanted to stand before you, just to make sure that everybody understand and know that, no, we're not trying to force our kids to go to HRT, we still will provide our regular Hampton City School services, but however, as we're preparing our kids, we wanted to make sure that we looked at every option, and if parents, you know, so choose to use the HRT, that that service is readily available to them, so that our kids are career and college ready, in life, ready as far as being successful. So we're very excited about that, and again, we will continue to work together and making sure that our kids get to and from, to make sure that they're at their respective academy, as well as any internships they may participate in. So again, I thank you for the opportunity.
Are there any questions or remarks from Mr. Wills?
Thank you.
Thank you ever so much. Oh, we have someone. Did you want to speak again?
No.
So it really is all about creating options for our young people. I actually come from, some of you may know from Liverpool, England, so public transportation is just what we do. If it, if we had to wait till we're thirteen to travel alone, many of us would not have even gotten to school, because that's how we travel, and it's just part of our fabric. And it has positive impacts, not only to the young people getting to and from their respective academies and creating options for them to get to possible internships and jobs and college and all these other things, but also it has positive impacts on the environment as well. And I just have to plug that because that's an important aspect to what we're trying to do. We're trying to improve the lives of our young people, but then also our community. So being really mindful on how we're influencing all those variables is something that we want to continue to be mindful about. So we are very excited about the possibilities for our young people and how we are partnering, again, with our community to really ensure that we're creating options and opportunities for our young people, and we're saying, here's an option, here's an opportunity, and here's how you can really leverage that opportunity for your benefit, not only now, but also later. So we're excited and we're grateful. So the Academies of Hampton, so all of you have been on this journey with us for some time, and it's been, we are in the implementation phase, and so we have the MASTA Plan, and you all have read it, I know you have, and so basically what you would see in there is our proposed academies, the pathways, our journey, how we anticipate and transform and what it means to teach and learn in Hampton City Schools. But it's, the MASTA Plan, it's a plan, we are in the implementation phase, and so sometimes you have to adjust those plans based upon the input that you're gathering from others. And so that's the beauty of this process. Every time we bring more into this conversation, things get better. So it's not just Hampton City Schools, and the more we have interaction with others, they are making it better. So every single time we come before you all, and I'm excited to embark on this today, it gets better because people are bringing their professional opinions to what we're doing and they're making it better. So I'm excited to share this information with you all. As you can see, we've been on this for some time, yes, we started with the Pocket Academies, and now we are embarking on the wall-to-wall academy model, and we've been on this journey for just over two years, Dr. Smith mentioned earlier. Of course, community partnerships, we have had to ensure that we have this active voice with our business partners, and that's the beauty of this process. Most importantly, as Most importantly, as people learn more about what we're doing in Hampton City Schools, they want to get involved. So our partner list continues to grow, which creates more opportunities for our young people and our community. So of course, as you all are aware, this year, we have gone full-scale Freshman Academy. Full-scale Freshman Academy. We have about 1,500 students every other day, getting to learn about themselves, getting to learn about themselves and the possible career opportunities that are available to them. 90 minutes every other day. The beauty of that is immense. In addition to that, we have to sign the career pathways and the academies. We know what they are, and I'm going to share that with you all soon. We are developing curriculum, and those educators, and many of you are, or have been, know that developing curriculum isn't always fun, but when you bring in real-world experiences and professionals in there and having these conversations to bring this curriculum alive, it becomes fun. People are having conversations in our advisory councils and advisory boards, and there's laughter. People are excited. They're excited to develop the curriculum, which means our teachers are going to be excited to teach the curriculum, which means our young people are going to be excited to learn the curriculum. And then we're going to be excited to hear about all the wonderful things that our young people are learning and doing in our building. So we're excited about that. So next year, 2018, we're scaling up. Remember, first year was this year, our young people are in Freshman Academy. Next year, they will be part of their College and Career Academy, and then we will have another group, Cohort 2022, that are going to be part of Freshman Academy. So they'll have the wonderful opportunities that our current Freshman Academy, young people are having. And so of course, we're going to follow the cohort of 2021 up, and so by the time they graduate, we will be full-scale, wall-to-wall College and Career Academies. Which means our young people will have the opportunity to learn through a college and career lens of interest. This, again, is not just for a certain group, this is for all our young people. It does not matter if you're going off to college, it does not matter if your goals are to go to Harvard, or if your goal is to go straight into the workforce. It does not matter. For our young people, and for us all, ultimately, we want to secure a career, a career that brings us happiness, because if we go to work, what did they say? If you go to work today, but it's not a job, because you're happy within it? And I know I totally butchered that, but you know what I'm trying to say. We're helping our young people to explore their passions, and then ultimately, secure careers. And so that does not matter if that career is directly after high school, or if it's after you go off to college. The College and Career Academy model that we're implementing is all about our young people and our community. And so we're excited that we have been able to work with our community to come up with 16 academies and 44 pathways of options for our young people. And we have business professionals and many others that are willing to make sure that these are robust learning experiences, that will create opportunities for our young people to secure certifications, dual enrollment opportunities, and various goals that they can achieve, and they can be successful once they come out of high school. It's all about ensuring that our young people are on a pathway to succeed, and so we're excited about that. Here is the condensed version. I remember there was a time where this was the version of our partners. This has now grown to multiple slides, that we won't bring all of today, but this continues to grow. As more the word spreads, we have more people that want to get involved. We have people that are coming from different cities that want to get involved and help with the Academies of Hampton model. Because guess what? While our students may go to Hampton City Schools, they don't always just work in Hampton City, Hampton, the city of Hampton, they venture out. So we have other businesses that also want to get involved with what we're doing in the city of Hampton, for the betterment of their future employees. So we're excited about that. So again, this process is a process, and it's community-driven. So of course, when you're looking at which academy should go up, we have to look at, basically, which jobs are going to be available upon the time our young people go into the workforce. So you look at the labor market demand, A, you look at the current trends, where is it heading, where is it going to be in the next few years? But then also, you have to do a strategic alignment with the regional goals of how they're attracting new businesses here. So we looked at the industry data for the growing labor market demands, but in addition to that, we are partnered with Go Virginia and others to attract new businesses here. So that's where you're getting the cyber security, because we know there is a need, so we have a cybersecurity academy. So while that's not robust right now in our community, we're trying to make that happen, and so we want to ensure that our young people have that opportunity. Hence, Phoebus High School is going to have a cybersecurity academy. In addition to that, we know we have the numbers. So then we take the numbers to industry councils, which are basically leaders of these businesses, and we're saying, this is what the numbers are telling us. Tell us in your reality, where are the needs within your industry? Where are the needs? Where are your positions growing? Where do you need employees? So then we take that information, and we developed advisory councils. So here's what the industry leaders are saying, here's the vision, the vision for their growing industry. And then the advisory councils operationalize that vision. How do we bring the vision of our leaders to life? So then from the advisory councils, they basically said, here's the pathways, here's the possible academies, or excuse me, here's the possible pathways, this is what they, how to operationalize the vision. And then it goes into the advisory board level, which is in the building, and then they implement that vision. Does that make sense? So I say all that to say that this is a process. And when you're doing a process, you have to have a lot of different voices in that to really bring it to life. Yes, we want to ensure that our young people are ready for college and career, and whatever that journey looks like for them. But also, we are trying to create a skilled workforce pipeline. So we need to ensure that there are jobs available for our young people upon that time when they're entering into the workforce. And so to do that, you cannot just throw it up in the air and hope it lands in the right place. You have to be very strategic about what you're doing, and ensuring that you have the right people at the table to have these conversations. So we're ensuring that we have the right people at the table, and we know we're constantly bringing more people to the table to have these conversations. But of course, everything that we do is guided by the Steering Committee. And again, the Steering Committee is Co-Chairwoman Dr. Smith, and then also City Manager Bunting. So they are steering this initiative. So this initiative, this transformation, is being steered by the leaders of our community, for the betterment, and I know I keep saying that, for the betterment of our young people and the community at large. So this has been an ongoing thing, and it's going to continue to evolve, because it should evolve, because it mirrors our business community. So that's a very important aspect. So here you can see the 16 academies that are available to our young people, and you will see by color, they're color-coded, so Bethel High School, Hampton High School, Kickitane High School, and Phoebus. And I'll go through this quickly. And here is Bethel High Schools. You'll see at the top portion, you will see the academy, and then it's followed by the various pathways. Hampton High School. Kickitane High School. And Phoebus High School. In addition to this, we also have another opportunity for our young people. Some of our young people want to be challenged, and they want to graduate with an associate's degree. And so guess what we're going to do? We're going to allow them to have an opportunity to graduate with an associate's degree. So we have partnered with Thomas Nelson Community College, and we have been now embarking on the journey where we are having the Advanced College Experience Academy, where our young people will have the opportunity to graduate with a social science degree, an associate's of social science, or a science degree. Saving our young people money, saving their families money, and then they can use their Freedom Pass to go from their zone school to their Thomas Nelson to get those as well. And then also, or they can take those courses directly in our classrooms. So that's another wonderful opportunity for our young people and our community. In addition to that, we have, for our exceptional learners, we have a gifted seminar where they can travel together, and whether they continue to stay in Hampton City Schools, or they go off to the Governor's Science Academy, Technology Academy, they have that opportunity as well. So here is another opportunity. Again, the Academies of Hampton, the model is about serving our young people. So we want to make sure that we meet the needs of all our young people. So here's an opportunity for our young people to travel together as the gifted cluster, but they will still take career pathway courses as an addition to the other opportunities that are available to them. Makes sense? Here's just a sample of the calendar, or excuse me, the schedule for them. And so here's the next, this is a, I have to say, this is a really big win. We have recently been part of a collaborative leaders group of people across the nation that are doing the Academies of Hampton model. And Hampton City Schools, even though we're technically behind, we're not full wall-to-wall yet, we've been invited to be part of this leadership group. So we are currently part of the leadership group. And one of the big things that across the country people are having problems with, is how do you implement an equitable academy selection lottery system? And so across the nation, or not across the nation, but across this system that we're in, many were having this problem. And so we actually were able to come up with an equitable way to implement this, that we are excited to share with others about what we're doing to ensure that our young people have an equitable way to select their academy, and then to be enrolled in their academy. So I'm really excited, after I share this with you all, that I can share it with others, and then others can also implement this model. So I will now turn it over to Dr. Cooper. And there's some very famous people that are coming, or students, right?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Samuels, Mrs. Cherry, members of the board, Dr. Smith. Very pleased to share with you the system that we'll use for students making choices, students in conjunction with their parents, making choices about which academies and which pathways they'd like to attend. We looked at hosted solutions that would have cost a great deal. We looked at existing electronic platforms, and our, excuse me? It's not the right slide? Okay, so we're going to move forward, and then I think we'll go back and pick this up. I'm here to talk about how students will actually make the selection. But these are the things that people need to do before they sit down and use the electronic platform. They need to, in their elementary and middle school years, you know, in middle school, they're in Naviance, they're looking, taking aptitude inventories, taking interest inventories, exploring careers. And then we're expecting them to speak with their counselors about those career choices and career interests. We have resources from them on our website, and we also have a course offerings guides that fully explain some of the available options for students. How am I doing so far? Okay. So we're going to move into the application process for rising ninth graders. I'm going to let my friends behind me go back and talk about that. But when we get to the actual current ninth graders who are moving into the 10th grade academy, I want to show you how they're going to do that. Then we'll go back and pick up the schedule, okay? Send them up here. So here's the selection process for the rising 10th graders. As I said, we looked at a lot of electronic platforms, we looked at some things that would have cost a fair amount of money, and then our own IT staff, I want to thank John Eagle for his leadership, and Stephanie Collins, a programmer, and Eileen Gerard, who also leads our Power School support team, because they created a way for us to actually make, I'm finally at the right thing, make a selection using our Power School portal. So I'm going to go back through that, right through this now, and then they'll probably go back and catch us up on the timeframes, okay? So, as you know, there is a parent portal, there is a student portal that's associated with Power School. And the wonderful thing about this is that the account is associated with a student who's in our system, so that we know that the choice that we see in the data pool will be connected to the right student, because we're using our own student information system to generate these choices. Parents can create an account and their own sign-in credentials, but in order for them to be able to associate an account with a student, they get a login information from us. So there's a code that associates them with their students. You can see this is a training database. Our IT staff made me an account and gave me some students. I have a family. And all of the students, you can see my whole family, or two-thirds of it, the Brady family, are right up there. Bobby is there, Cindy is there, Marcia is there, and Peter is there. And if I click on any one of my students, you can see we're looking at Marcia Brady's grades and attendance information, because Martha is, or Marcia is an 11th grader, you don't see anything to choose an Academy of Hampton, because 11th graders are not the folks that are making the selection. If I choose a different student, Cindy is a ninth grader. She's currently in the ninth grade academy. And so if you look to the left there, there is an icon that appears for her that will allow her, in conjunction with her parents, to pick academies. So we click on that academy choice, and I want you to notice across the top bar there, right above the blue Career Academy choices, we've also put a link to the Academies of Hampton website. So as I'm making these choices, if I want to know a little bit more about a pathway, or I want to find out something more about an academy, when I click on that, it opens another tab. And so I can toggle back and forth, and I can see information on the academies, and also make my selections. There are spaces here with dropdown menus for five different academy choice selections. And when I click on the first one, Cindy's very interested in law and public safety, and so that's the first academy selection. The smart programmers in our IT department associated the next dropdown, the pathways, with the academy that's chosen. So rather than having a whole big, long list, you only see the pathways that are available to you in the academy of law and public safety. So we're going to choose one of those. The first one was firefighter, emergency medical technician, and Cindy's really interested in this. So her second choice also is at the academy in law and public safety. When we go to the dropdown for the pathway, though, you can see my first choice is grayed out. This prohibits anyone from making the same selection twice, thereby losing one of their five choices. So these are all, I just pick the academy, then I go to the dropdown, and I pick another one. After I've populated all of them, then I go to the submit academy choice button down in the right. When I click on that academy choice button, it gives me a warning. It says, please take a look at this record, please take a look at your choices, because when you confirm submit, you're no longer going to be able to make changes. So it's just like looking in your cart when you're shopping on Amazon. They want you to confirm your order when you know you have the right information, then you go ahead and submit. So confirm the academy choices, please verify changes before submitting. I do that, and then I get a message that lets you know that your choices have gone in. So your academy choices have been submitted, and we know that it's locked, but if you went, "Oh, I picked the wrong one," it tells you clearly right where to go. Contact your child's guidance counselor, and that counselor can help you in a couple of ways. The counselor has, on the backside, as an administrator, can unlock your choice screen. So if you meant to be working with Bobby, and you were actually working with Cindy, and you put in all the wrong choices, you could call the counselor, and the counselor would unlock the screen for you, and you could go in and make the selections that you needed to make. Or the counselor can make the changes for you. And once those changes are made, once you're locked in, then if you go into the student portal, it tells you exactly what you've chosen. So if we forget what we've chosen, if we want to look at it again, if we want to find some details, we can go back in, and we can always take a look in that student portal. And the wonderful thing about this is that after everything is said and done, because it's our own student information system, we know the data is accurate, we'll download that, and we will upload it into another system, our FileMaker system, where we run all of our lottery selections for choice programs. And then we'll get the data file there, push it back into the Power School database, and be able to send notifications to parents through the same portal that they made the selections in. And along with that, it'll say Cynthia's been, or excuse me, Marcia, Cindy. Cindy's been granted a seat at the Law and Public Safety Academy in the firefighter EMT section that she wanted, in that pathway, and it'll ask a parent to go ahead and confirm, yes, that's the choice that we, we are correct on that choice, and then it'll bring up and say, which, which transportation offerings do you want? So I'll provide my own transportation, or I'll be riding the shuttle, if it's an out-of-zone, or I'll be using an HRT Freedom Pass. And it asks for that in the morning and the afternoon, because we want to give families choices to have different modes of transportation at different ends of the day, because of after-school activities, jobs, other things like that. So I think now I probably have to back it all the way up, and we'll see if Ms. Heard can go through this again. Are you good?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right. We're very excited about it, though.
We are. And so if you ever want to give someone else your slides, Dr. Cooper is always a go-to, right? So I, perfect place to actually pick back up. So as we mentioned earlier, there are options, and options are important. Some young people may want to come from eighth grade, and they already know which College and Career Academy they want to enter into in 10th and career academy they want to enter into in 10th grade. So, our young eighth graders will have the opportunity to apply for a college and career academy. And they may be granted a slot if there is still a slot available after the lottery has been run and our 10th graders have been placed in the academy. So, many have heard that young people will enter into a freshman academy in their zoned high school. Some young people may already know which college and career they want, academy they want to enter into and they want to start their high school experience in the school that they want to go to the college and career academy in. So, they don't have that change. So, there's an opportunity for young people to apply to be part of that academy, start in ninth grade instead of waiting to 10th grade year. So, that is an application for the young people to do that. If the young people are not sure and they want to go ahead and just go through the process that we're doing, they start their zone high school, they go to freshman academy and then they make the decision from there which college and career academy they want to go into, they have that option as well. If the young person applies and they happen not to get into their college and career academy when they're eighth graders, they can apply again when they're in the ninth grade. So, it's all about options for our young people, creating options for our young people to be successful. So, here is just the rising ninth grade information. We know the timeline is getting ahead and we're excited. So, after tonight's presentation, we actually have another presentation for our rising ninth grade families at Kickitane High School tomorrow. So, we will share this information with them all about what they can expect with the college and career academies and the transformation and the opportunities that are available for their rising ninth grade young people. As you will still see here, the timeline is slightly, it's behind because of course, if you're a rising ninth grader, you will be enrolled into a college and career academy only if there is a slot available after our 10th graders, rising 10th graders have been placed. So, they won't be notified until around March 30th, the final, final. Here's our academy students for that. For rising 10th graders, it's very important that we set our young people up so they're making informed decisions about the college and career academies they would like to enter into. Currently, in our Success One-on-One class, we have developed lesson plans for our young people to become more aware about all the different pathways that we're offering, 44 of them within 16 academies, so they're doing lessons. And the beauty of that is, and coming on January 10th, we will have a large exploratory event. We're anticipating about 80 exhibitors there that will show young people the intricate details of these pathways. So, it's going to be, of course, my Future My Journey Career Exploratory Program. And I do have to do a shameless plug, we have business partners that want to be part of this. There is no fee to exhibit at this event and you will be helping our young people to make the decision about which college and career academy they would like to enter into. So, this is a wonderful opportunity for our business partners and for our young people. I will say that our parents are also encouraged to join their young person on January 10th to be part of this experience with them. We know that our parents are very influential in the decisions that our young people are making, so we want to ensure that they have a deep understanding of all the possible careers that are intertwined within our college and career academies and pathways. So, we are inviting our parents as well to join us on that January 10th event to learn more about the Academies of Hampton and all the different businesses and careers that are available in our community. Of course, we have the Rising 10th Grade Nights. Here's the big information. At, um, January 11th, which is coming up soon, the electronic application that Dr. Cooper just shared with you all will go live, so we're very excited about that. Our young people will have to about, to February 1st to complete their selections. Then we'll run the lottery and then our young people will have ultimately till March 2nd after they've been, received notification of their academy to make that final confirmation that this is my academy. So, we're excited that things are moving very quickly. And of course, Marcia and the Brady bunch are back again. But again, here's just the exploratory opportunities for our young people. We really want to make sure that our young people are exposed to as much as that we can expose them to, so they're making informed decisions about the college and career academies that they would like to enter into. Here again, just a reminder for our families, are the Rising Ninth Grade Nights to learn more about the Academies of Hampton and the high school experience for the young people in ninth grade, rising ninth grade. Here's a 10th grade. And of course, we do have one more thing. We've had plenty of visits, but Governor had something to say to you all as well, so I definitely wanted to share that.
Extraordinary. I have not seen this in any other school district in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I applaud you for everything that I talk about, changing high schools, but those that don't try, new things are gonna fail. They're gonna be stuck in neutral. You're not gonna be stuck in neutral. I want you all, and fast forward, try new things, be creative, shake up the box. You only live once, it's your life, go for the gusto.
So, that is exactly what we're doing. We are going for the gusto. And of course, the Governor wanted to share that again with you all, that we are going for the gusto. So, of course, we are very excited and we are grateful for your time. I know this was a lot of information, but we just really want you to know that we're really passionate about what we're doing for our young people. Not only us in Hampton City Schools, but our community at large are really passionate and committed to ensuring that our young people embark on their future and their journeys. And so, we're along there with them. So, thank you ever so much for your time, we are grateful.
Are there any questions or remarks from board members? Mr. Kelgor?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Heard, Dr. Woods, and, uh, the HRT people as well as Mr. Wills and his staff, but I, I also want to, and Dr. Cooper, but I wanted to give a special shout-out to the, the great narration that was on the video from our student rep there. Mr. Williams there, that was, that was an excellent narration, so, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cherry?
Yes. Wow. I, I just want to say, I'm a product of Hampton City Schools. And I think I can say with all the confidence in the world that this is not your mama's Hampton City Schools. This is total transformation. When you look at the fact that we're talking 16 academies with 44 pathways, that provides so many options and opportunities for our students that one could never imagine. And I must say, Ms. Heard, with your enthusiasm, I do believe that that has a lot to do with the number of community partners and the people bought into it and under the wonderful leadership of Dr. Woods and others. And when it comes to transportation, that's never easy, even during our regular school system. But I think everybody who has ever worked with Mr. Wills knows that he has always been very creative when it comes to doing what's best for our students. And to engage the administrators and the staff at HRT speaks volumes in terms of those kind of partnerships. And I do remember, because I was here as an employee during the Penn Tran days, and Dr. Woods, you were here too, and Ms. Henry, we all worked very diligently with the Penn Tran people, but the, the important piece was that they wanted to work with us. And lastly, I'd like to say to Dr. Cooper, I'm just amazed at the way a student can sign up for the academies. It would appear, and I know nothing's foolproof, but it would appear to me from what I saw, you have covered, or we have covered, every possible base. You know, a lot of times, people get frustrated when they're trying to do anything that's new or different because it's difficult or because they can't understand it. But the fact that we've got students and parents who can go in and maybe not even know the exact name of the academy, but know what it is they want to do and that you've got a tab which opens them right back up into the page, that to me, that's customer service and that's great customer service. So, I want to congratulate you for putting our students first and just totally transforming the way we do business in Hampton City Schools. Thank you.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wonderful presentation by Dr. Woods and Ms. Heard on tonight. Also, it was a wonderful presentation that you did for the Virginia, uh, School Board Association in Williamsburg. And they were excited about the presentation and there was a lot of questions asked and some schools were very interested in the academies. Some of the parent, uh, concerns that I've been confronted with has been about the student who are zoned for a particular school, um, and then they put in for the academy and the academy is at that school that they've been zoned for in their ninth grade and they are not selected for that particular academy going into the 10th grade. They have been wondering what would happen to their students. And so, that was one. So, I've told them, and I want to make sure that I'm correct, that they, that they would not be re-zoned to another school or something like that, that they would have another opportunity to reapply for that same academy. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's my first.
So, Dr. Woodhouse, yes, a student, if they're zoned for a school, will have a seat in that school.
Okay.
So, you know, we know and through the process that Dr. Cooper has designed, you know, those students will have priority if you're zoned for that school. So, absolutely, you have, we have to have a seat in that school for that student.
Thank you, and I've been correct.
Yes.
All right. The next question was about the core courses, that English, Science, and Social Studies is always named as the core courses. One parent asked me if math is considered to be one of the core courses.
It is, yes. Math, mathematics is definitely one of the core courses and Mrs. Holmes always lets us know that. Carolyn Holmes, our curriculum leader for mathematics. Our young people tend to diverge somewhat in terms of the course that they take because they're at different places with mathematics. So, for example, in grade nine, we have some students in Algebra I, we have some students in Geometry, we have some students in Algebra II. And so, where we can have those mathematics courses on our teams, we do. To the every extent possible, we include mathematics. We're engaged in project-based learning, training, our teachers were engaged in that yesterday and today, and we have other sessions coming up. And so, we integrate that, that collaboration with all four core and then the pathway teachers as well.
Okay.
So, where we can, we do health and physical education as well.
Okay, I am good because I said the same thing. I told him that, okay. I'm on a roll.
You're on a roll, Dr. Woodhouse.
Also, now, this is my personal question. In, in the transportation department where the, the presentation on transportation was a wonderful presentation, I just have a question about whether there'd be an increase in hours and miles and students that will be being transported back and forth to the academies and to their prospective schools? Yes, sir?
Rolls is coming up.
Excellent question, Dr. Woodhouse. At this time, no, sir, it would not be. What we did this year, we wanted to prepare for next year, so we actually built those routes and have those shuttle buses already established at each high school. So, what we do, they do not have that route on a second tier, we can use them as we need to fill in for field trips as well as other drivers that may call in to cover routes. So, as of now, no, sir, there's no, there's no additional cost and/or as far as mileage. No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good. Ms. Kidd?
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. It was so beautifully put together. I was looking at the program of study and I was like, "Oh, my goodness, I'd be going to Bethel High School and I've never thought that in a million years." And I just wanted to speak from the ninth grader's side, just seeing the current freshman academy, of so many of the students are so excited and that they're gonna be career-ready in, in for their college. And I got to interact with them, some from Kickitane, the Summer Bridge Program, and they were all excited about the academies. And then there, of course, are the students who are a little apprehensive about the academies, but I'm sure, once they get started in their application process, they'll be warmed up to the idea and they'll be so excited. But I did just have one question for the classes of 2019, 2018, for the upcoming, as they're finishing their, up to graduation, are they gonna be affected by the academies at all?
So, some of those students are in current Pocket Academies, but this is a cohort model, so we're developing it from the current freshman class. The young people who are in Pocket Academies will continue in that and we're supporting fully the Pocket Academies. So, it doesn't change for the others who are not in Pocket Academies. Their, their program of study will remain. So, you want to go back and start over as a ninth grader?
Okay, thank you very much.
We, we actually came to part of the Summer Bridge at Kickitane when you had the viewing for the solar eclipse. That was a wonderful day. Dr. Smith was there as well. We were extended invitation to be a part of that and we, we enjoyed it a great deal.
And we have to follow up with Dr. Woodhouse. My apologies, Dr. Woodhouse.
I'm getting ready to pick on somebody here. But is Hampton Roads Transit, are they a part of one of, are they one of our business partners?
Oh, yes, they are.
Okay, 'cause I.
They have their own slide though with the.
I didn't see them up here, so I wanted to find out.
They have their own slide. They will definitely be on there.
Yeah, they're not on this big one right here. We were like, trying to see if they were there.
Ms. Mugler?
Uh, most of my questions were actually answered during the presentation and in some conversations earlier today. But I did have a question with regard to the process where we're, the equitable selection process and the five selections. Does a student have to select five?
We do want them to put five choices down. And our, our work will be to try to get them into that first spot. If that is not available, to try to get them into that second spot. But we do want students to make those selections just because if an academy is unavailable, it would be difficult for us to go back. If a large number of students only made one or two selections and those seats were unavailable, it would be very difficult for us to keep our timeline and go back and get the information from them on where we could find them a seat that they would be comfortable and happy learning. So, that is why we're asking for multiple choices, even though we, it is our expectation that we want to get them a seat in one of their top three choices. The other two are just backup.
And, and as a follow-up to that and, and part of what Reverend Woodhouse said about these student at the zoned school who put in for an academy, will they automatically get their first choice academy if it's in their zoned school or will, how does that work exactly? I mean, you want to have a seat for them, I heard that part, but.
We know we have to create a spot for them at that zoned school. Will it be their first choice? Across the network and that we can gain some experience from those who've gone before us, typically 90% of the students do get their first choice. So, that's our goal, is to really get the vast majority of our students their first choice. We're gonna work hard to make that, that work, along with the assistant principals who do the master's schedule. So, that's been the experience. We haven't, we haven't run ours yet, so we don't have that, but drawing from the experience of others, typically 90% get their first choice. We know because of the way our schools are, we want, if you're zoned for that school, we want you to be able to attend that school. So, our goal is to work with students and families to make sure that they do get, to whatever extent possible, their first choice. If we don't get the first, certainly go into the second. But having as deep a pool there for us to work with will help of the students selecting their interest.
Okay, okay. Um, and my question was answered about the medical, middle school selection. The math piece, I guess I, um, and Reverend Woodhouse got a little bit into the question about the math because I found it curious too, that it wasn't, you know, on that list of core. So, I mean, I understand that you have students who are at a variety of levels for math. So, that just means that the, those three core that you're listing, everybody's gonna fall into one of those. And for the math, they may, they'll be taking a math most likely, but it'll be scattered in a variety of directions.
Correct. And to whatever extent we can keep the purity of that team, we do. And we, we have experience with that now because we did the freshman academy. And so, that purity rate of keeping students on that team and the purity of that team, we had very high levels with freshman academy. Sometimes it's a challenge because that could represent three different teachers, trying to get three different teachers on one team. And so, where we can, we do. But definitely, mathematics is a core course.
Okay, great. And then, the only other thing I, I wanted to circle back to was the transportation. We had some pretty in-depth conversations about that earlier and I appreciate the presentation tonight, Mr. Wills, and, um, and I'm, I'm impressed with the partnership conversations that we've had with, um, with the folks at HRT and, and the partnership that they're willing to work with us on, off, offering options for our young people in terms of, you know, transporting to where it is they. they want to get and need to get. I do think it's going to be critical that we're real robust in how we are communicating to families on that. And, you know, I was on the board when we went to an all-yellow bus fleet. And so it's really very dear to my heart that we have an all-yellow bus fleet. My mother was, and I don't talk about my parents because it just makes me cry because they're not here anymore. But my mother was a big proponent for all-yellow buses, like thirty-some-odd years ago. My god, it's longer than that because I'm older than that. But anyway, a long time, I mean, for years before this board went an all-yellow bus fleet, people in this community had asked and asked and asked for that. So, you know, I still truly value that all-yellow bus fleet, but I also value that we are going to have an opportunity to offer options to young people to get to where they want to be if they want another option. So, thank you all so much for the presentation. It was long, but it was good. I loved it all, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Henry?
I was just thinking that it's good to have all those choices because not only, that gives a counselor a place to start. If I have requested Academy A and I didn't get it, then we can say how Academy B really sort of fits what I want to do. And the thing that we have to say to young people is that you're going to be individualizing this even more with the other experiences you choose and your senior project and the things that you do that are totally unique to yourself. So having the other choices shows other interests that we can link with students and we can help them see how maybe Academy C doesn't have the title we were looking for, but the core concepts and the core skills that are involved are going to be transferable because the skills we want children to learn in high school are not just very discreet ones, but also ones that are marketable over a wide range of careers. If I study cyber operations, that's applicable to any business I can think of in today's world. And so it's applicable for a lot of different fields. I could be in a medical field and need to know cyber operations. So we can show kids the connections. And by having more information, we give this counselor a starting point to say, don't worry, it's going to work out because this is going to fit with this, and besides, you get another chance next year, too.
Exactly. And we, our school counselors are top-notch, and they'll be able to make those connections.
And they're excited about it.
Yeah, and they're very excited about it. In addition to that, and I certainly want them to stand and be recognized tonight, we have four excellent academy coaches and high school principals who are fully behind this work, as well as our CTE director, Seth Black. I'd like for them to stand and be recognized tonight. And there's a person here who writes much of the steps in terms of how parents can access all of this, as well as our grants. And we have benefited from several of the grants this year with $200,000 to do extended school learning, and then $50,000 to do this innovative work and the implementation of it. As well as recently, we were awarded $50,000, $75,000 from Honda to do a greenhouse so that our students can produce the food that they will be cooking, as well as share food with the food bank. And that's Debbie Russell, who's also here tonight. So it truly is a team effort within our school division, but externally as well. Our business partners and industry, HRT, and others have just been wonderful to work with.
Are there any further questions or remarks from board members?
Dr. Woods, all I can say, continue to do the smart work that you are doing. It will pay dividends for our students, and so thank you so much for the smart work.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the academies update. And as we move, and you have had an opportunity to experience through the presentation from exploration to implementation. So thank you again, members of staff, for that. We'll now move to the Business and Operations Financial Report. Ms. Vizel Townsend will come and provide the financial report at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. I won't be before you long. I am here this evening to present the October 31st, 2017 Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Encumbrances for Hampton City Schools. Our revenues and expenditures are, or were, $47,8,598 and $66,859,927 respectively for our revenues and expenditures. They are pretty much on target for this time of the year, and our budget is based on our average daily membership of 19,250. Our fall membership report was submitted to the state for September 30th, and we reported 19,069 students. We've had a decline from what we've budgeted for, and this gave us an opportunity to look around the state to see if this decline was unique to Hampton or if it's something that's being experienced around the state of Virginia. And what we found was that it is something that's being experienced around the state. So we looked at what we call our thirteen first cities, and they are of similar demographics as Hampton and perform similar to Hampton. And what we found of those thirteen cities, sixty-nine percent of them had declines in enrollment for this time of the year. We also found that three of the six local school divisions had declined in enrollment. And our enrollment for Hampton is in line with the decline in population for the city of Hampton. So based on the decline and looking at our prior-year trends, we projected our March ADM to be 18,985 students, or 265 below what we're currently budgeted at. This decrease in enrollment will result in a $1.5 million reduction in revenue for this fiscal year. And while we are looking at a reduction, a loss of revenue, we've also looked at mitigating things to do to help us throughout the year between now and June 30th. We've also included in this report the categorical transfers for category nine. And so at this time, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from board members? Dr. Woodhouse?
Can I ask just this one question?
Yes, sir.
Most of the time, at this time of the year, we're probably a third into the school year. So most of our readings would probably be in the thirties. Am I correct? Thirty percent of the revenue that should have already been used up, and maybe another sixty-some percent. I'm looking at operations and maintenance, and it's at 72.5%. Could you help me out a little bit with that?
Operation and maintenance, we had some expenditures that we had not anticipated with one of our schools. So we had more expenditures than we expected. And also with operations and maintenance, one of the things that we've pushed this year is when you looked at that expenditure figure of $66 million that has been spent to date, that includes actual expenditures as well as obligations. So our actual expenditures are around $53 million. Our obligations are at $13 million. That $13 million hasn't been spent yet, but there are contracts that are out there of things that are coming. So we've encouraged many of our departments, and maintenance and operations especially, to try to encumber funds as early as possible so that if things come up that are an emergency, they don't have to wait for the process of getting things encumbered before we can actually start doing the work and paying the bills. So that's why they're so much higher than what they have been in the past.
Okay. So we're keeping an eye on that so that we won't go over the budget?
Absolutely. One of our requirements for the state of Virginia is that we do not exceed the overall budget. And that is something that we look at faithfully. Not just on a monthly basis, but week to week, that we are not overspending. And if we do see a trend where it is above the norm, we look at that to see if it's an anomaly, if something has been coded incorrectly, if there's a concern. And if there's a concern, we meet with those individual departments to talk to them and see what we can do to try to reduce that before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it's also important to note that you could very well see as a part of the report, for example, that you're at 100% or, let's say, 50% if it's a regional tuition and there are two payments. And so it may not necessarily run on that schedule if indeed, based upon the payment plan, if it's a regional tuition. It could very well fluctuate and change in that regards as well.
That's correct.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? One, before you take your seat, Ms. Vaz, one quick question. In regards to the reduction of like approximately 200 students, is that primarily in the elementary, middle, or high schools? Or is it just across the board?
It's across the board.
Across the board, okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your presentation, Ms. Vaz.
You're welcome.
All righty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes superintendent and staff reports.
Okay. Our next item is item four. But before we proceed with item four, I will look to all the superintendents to make a remark.
Sure. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as you are aware, we issued a statement regarding the renaming of the campus at Lee, given that it is not a school but a combination of distinct educational services. As such, the naming or renaming was not subject to board governance pursuant to school board policy FFA. Rather, it was determined to be an administrative function. To this end, the location housing these programs is hereby named the Hampton City Schools Adult and Alternative Learning Center effective immediately. I want to thank Dr. Cooper and the many members who reside as a part of the various programs there for their support in this regards as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And I, too, have a remark that I would like to share with the viewing audience and members in attendance. The Hampton School Board recently held public hearings on the topic of renaming two Hampton City Schools, the campus at Lee and Jefferson Davis Middle School. On behalf of the school board, I wish to thank community members, students, and citizens of Hampton for their comments at each of the hearings. The school board is now involved in the process, processing of, the school board is now involved in the processing the comments and information received during the hearings. The request brought pursuant to school board policy FFA, naming new facilities or renaming existing facilities continues to be under consideration by the board. The board is carefully weighing the input from the citizens of Hampton, determining what is in the best interest of our community. Our plan is to have a comprehensive review so that we can make a comprehensive decision. We are pleased that the administration has renamed the campus of Lee to accurately reflect the programs that are housed there, given that they are educational services and not a school. The new name for these programs is Hampton City Schools Adult and Alternative Learning Center. At this time, the school board aims to include a discussion of the next steps regarding the renaming request of Jefferson Davis Middle School on its deliberation agenda on January 24, 2018, which is a work session of the board. In addition to that, Ms. Henry would like to also make a remark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that I am appreciative that the superintendent has outlined the administrative steps to naming the program center, now referred to as the campus at Lee. I believe the new name will make it more apparent to our constituents how to locate the services and programs that are housed there. While Lee Elementary School has in effect been gone for quite a while, the name lingered, and that it will be gone is my only regret. My concern is not for the name itself, but for the school identity that is associated in the minds of many students who attended it over the years. There's a nostalgia for one school, and when it disappears, there's a certain amount of sadness. This was certainly the case when the name of Phoenix School was changed many years ago and when other schools like Tarant, Mary Peak, Merrimack have been repurposed, or others like Thorpe or Buckrow have simply disappeared. I make this point as I know we will be deliberating after the holiday about the name of Jefferson Davis School. While I certainly don't wish to ascribe any bad motives to those who chose the name, as Lowell said, "Time makes ancient good uncouth." And many in our community have expressed an aversion to the historic identity of the name. I just feel sad for the students who might lose the identity of their school. I submit to my colleagues as a suggestion that if a decision is made to change the name of Davis School, we take it as an opportunity to reuse one of the names of the schools that have a history in Hampton. These could include Mary Peak, George With, Wilson Thorpe, Caesar Tarant, Sinclair, and the list goes on. I hope that the idea might take a foothold with some of you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Ms. Ann Cherry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to briefly just thank Dr. Smith and Dr. Cooper and the administration for moving steadfastly to handle what clearly is an administrative decision. I had an opportunity not too long ago to visit St. Charles Parish School Division in Louisiana. And while the majority of their schools were named after people who had done wonderful things in their community, when it came to their satellite centers, like the center we have, they were all named St. Charles Parish, which reflected the school division. So there's a parallel there, and I thank you.
Any other remarks from board members? With none, I will proceed with hearing of any delegation or presentation of any written communication or petition. Ms. Bowers, could you read the protocol, please?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual students as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. And our first speaker is Andrew Shannon.
Greetings, Mr. Chair, Ms. Cherry, all the members of the Hampton City School Board. I am 100% proponent of civil rights. You can Google Andrew Shannon Civil Rights or Andrew Shannon Civil Rights YouTube. Tonight, we heard from a student named Jeremiah who shared his poem on his dream. I heard from a school board member from Greensboro. Well, there was a former student named Clarence in Greensboro who helped to integrate the lunch counters at Woolworth. You don't have to wait till February Black History Month. You can look up Clarence now. He was with me yesterday. That was a former student who grew up in our movement. There was a former student who grew up in our movement. He's now on a local school board. And then there's another one who father, who was immersed in civil rights, and now his son is on a local city council. There is a Baptist minister who became our founding SCLC president. I'm talking about Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Well, you know, he shared his dream on August 28th, 1963. Yesterday, we took buses from Virginia and Carolina and throughout the country. Had students, citizens from Hampton, Portsmouth, Suffolk, Newport News, Carolina. We traveled to the United States Supreme Court. From 13 years of age to some of them was 80, some of them pushed their way with their walkers to take a stand. And today I'm here in Hampton for a school board meeting. We're 100% for civil rights. We don't get involved because it's popular. We take a stand because it's the right thing to do. We raised the issue about renaming these schools in 2016. Not only was renaming of the school an issue with us, we helped residents in housing. It was 140 then, but it's thousands now because of our efforts of taking a stand. So what I'm here tonight for is next month is the 99th birthday celebration all over the country of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. January 15th will be his 99th birthday, had he lived. In April, all over the country, people going to press their way to Memphis, Tennessee. Because you see, that's the 50th anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. We didn't get involved in civil rights because it's popular. I'm involved in civil rights because it's the right thing to do. I've been involved for 30 years. I sent you a letter dated December the 3rd, and I followed up with another letter dated December the 4th for the renaming. Now, we appreciate your effort of changing the name at Lee. But let's back it up. We didn't have to go through that process this year nor last year. All you had to do was take a stand. All you had to do was take a stand, remove it, because it's the right thing to do. But I'm glad you did due diligence, and we done removed one of the names off of the campus at Lee. But let's finish the job. Let's take a stand. There was a student at Byrd School in Heraco who I was inspired when I saw her taking that stand to remove that school name, because Byrd represented massive resistance. There was an activist named Heather Hare in August of this year who lost her life because she took a stand. We brought her mother here in September to highlight Heather's efforts. And there were some students here during those hearings from Hampton University. And I want y'all to understand, students become leaders. There is a student in Williamsburg who was on Williamsburg City Council there. So I leave you in closing. Well, from Rosa Parks to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Dr. Curtis W. Harris Jr., Reverend Marcellus Harris Jr., Edna V. Davis, and Dr. Mary C. Christian, known as Dr. C., all have a common denominator. They're all freedom fighters. And as I take my seat, because I hear the bell ring, I leave you with, I don't feel no ways tired. Nobody told me that the road would be easy, but I don't believe that my God has brought me this far to lead me. So I'm asking you all to take a stand. Go ahead and change the name of Jefferson Davis. It's not anything you have to think about. Thank you, and God bless you, and you have a wonderful Christmas and holiday season.
Good evening. First of all, as a commissioner on HRT, I was happy to see the presentation today that was given by Bryant. And the student pass, Freedom Pass, is an excellent program. I wish they had it when my son was in high school to save me a lot of steps. So I thought that was a very good program. So I'm here to thank all of the speakers that came out. It was close to, it was over 100 speakers that spoke. I know letters were sent and emails were sent, but coming out, it was a diverse group of people, different races, ages, political views. They came out from all over, not only Hampton but other areas as well. And all we ask is that you adhere to your policy of renaming schools, which is renaming schools after persons that has, that contributed outstanding service and to mankind in their community, state, and country. Last year, when Mr. Shannon came up as from SCLC, we didn't get involved on it last year because we were involved with some issues that was inside of the school. And with the academies now and some other things that's going forward, we meet with Dr. Smith quarterly, and we are able to be well-versed and learn about what's going on on the inside of the schools. In August, when we found this policy, that's when we had sent a letter on name-changing the school. Last year, you had two public hearings, one on May 18th and one on June 1st. And on June 22nd, you voted unanimously not to change the name. There was a quote in the paper that was by then-chair Mrs. Mugler. "If the community had come out resoundingly for us to move forward and do that, we would have impaneled a committee to consider names." Mugler said, "That's not what we heard from our citizens. What has changed?" That's what I want to know. What has changed? So you have 30 or 40 people to speak last year, and you could vote unanimously that you're not going to change. You have hundreds of people to speak in two public hearings, and said that they want change, and now you want to kick the can down the road. Or appease us with renaming Robert Lee, I mean, the campus of Lee, which is, we're happy this changed, that's fine. But I said, when I spoke to the press, I said, "We await to see Jefferson Davis." So I'm just asking you to be consistent with your policy and be consistent in the way you handle business. You all have a happy holidays.
Our next speaker is Brenda Marks.
Mr. Chairman and board members, my name is Brenda Marks. I live at 54 Marina Road. My eight-year-old daughter Anastasia attends Hunterby Andrews School. I'm here tonight, unfortunately, to advise you that on December 20th, I will be delivering a formal ADA complaint against Hampton City Schools for the policy that you have enacted and enforced that prevents any professional from participating in a classroom setting. My daughter is autistic, and I find it amusing that her pediatrician can write a prescription. I can take it to the school nurse, and the school nurse will dispense that medication. But that same doctor can write an order for ADA therapy, and the ADA therapist gets stopped at the door. December 20th was picked as the date because due to the fact that my therapy provider cannot gain access to the school, my daughter's case will be closed on December the 19th. It is very difficult to watch an A. D. honor roll student get up and throw up every morning that she has to go to school, and it's heartbreaking. But it is absolutely infuriating that this school has a policy that prevents me from giving her the help she needs. I'm telling you this tonight in the hopes that my offer of a waiver, releasing the school from liability, if they will let the therapist in, will be accepted, and she can continue her care. On that, that I will end. I have a few minutes left. I would like to say that I heard your accountant say that we are going to have a $1.5 million shortage. Nobody has announced what the cost of changing the name at Lee is. It was coupled together with both schools at the public hearing. I would sincerely hope that when you are doing your decision-making process, that if you decide to change the school's name, it comes with the caveat that it will be done when funding from somewhere other than the school's budget is raised. Thank you.
There are no other speakers, so we will move on with the agenda. Therefore, the next agenda item is item five, which is items for action. We do have several items for action, 5.01 through 5.11. And the first one is 5.01 is the suspension number 2017-1. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. I move that the recommendation of the hearing officer in the case of suspension 2017-01 not be sustained. I further move that the matter be referred back to the superintendent for additional consideration and recommendation regarding the employment of the division employee.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Cherry and seconded by Ms. Henry that we return the recommendation to the superintendent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. Next item, I am, would it be in the approval of the board to take these separately? Item 5.02 and item 5.03, take those separately, and item 5.04, the review of the minutes, and then the others take as a block? Would that be the recommendation of the board?
Yeah, I think we need to go through 5.05, and then we'll be able to consolidate.
Consolidate, okay.
After 5.06.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, I think we need some more information for 5.03, do we not? Do we need to have that officer named?
It is.
No, the clerk is, oh, I'm sorry. It's just, I'm ahead of myself. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve 5.02, the appointment of Sally Sidoncer as deputy clerk of the school board.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry that we approve the superintendent recommendation of the deputy clerk of the school board, and it is seconded by Ms. Cherry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. Item 5.03, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Carolyn Bowers as the Freedom of Information Officer through January 10, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Ms. Henry that we, the school board, appoint Ms. Mugler as the Freedom of, Ms. Bowers as the Freedom of... Do a role, Ms. Mugler. Ms. Bowers as the Freedom of Information Officer. Is there any discussion?
Yours.
Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. Item 5.04, is there a motion to accept item 5.04 and item 5.05?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept 5.04 through 5.0. Did you say five?
Five.
Five, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Woodhouse and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we approve item 5.04 and item 5.05. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest that we consider item 5.06 through 5.01, which represent modifications to school board policies, minor ones, I might add, as they've been deliberated for a couple sessions, that we consider those as a block.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we approve these items as a block, item 5.06 through 5.11. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is information. And at this time, I would like to share that the next regular board meeting will be held on January the 10th, 2018, at 6:30 PM at Jones Magnet Middle School. And a work session will be held on January the 24th, 2018, at 6:30 PM at the Rupert Sergeant Building, Juan Franklin Street. Dr. Smith, do you have any information to share?
Mr. Chair, no further business from the superintendent. Thank you. As at this time, Ms. Henry has already highlighted, and we would encourage members of our community to please go onto the division's website, and we have a full listing there of all of the wonderful winter concerts that are scheduled to take place in our schools. And it's a great time to see our young people and to showcase their talent, their musical talent. So we look forward to sharing in that regards. Thank you so much.
Any other information from board members? Ms. Cherry?
Yes, just one short announcement, if I could. With the chairman, Mr. Samuels, extensive work with the Department of Social Services, and I having served as member of the board, he and I both will be co-sponsoring a children's toy drive this Monday, on December 11th, at the Wing Bistro from 5 to 8. We've got so many children who've been identified through the Department of Social Services who may not have a good holiday season if we cannot get them toys. So we're asking if you can to stop by that Wing Bistro. It's located at 2274 Executive Drive in that strip mall between 5 and 8 and drop off an umrapp toy. Mr. Lance Jones with the Department of Social Services will be coordinating the effort to make sure that it gets to the appropriate children.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cherry, for that information. Are there any other information from board members? Ms. Kidd, do you have any information as a student rep?
No, I do not. No, I do not.
Okay. With that said, our meeting is adjourned.